All right, we're going to go ahead and get this study session started. We have two items on the agenda, and I believe we're going to start with a presentation on the continuum of care applicant. And who, Mr. City Manager, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Lisa Craig and Jane Hudson from Community Development. And Lisa is our Community Development Block Grant Administrator. We find ourselves at a fork in the road, and sometimes you take the fork. We will be without any staff in our housing function in about two weeks. And we also received a communication from our partners at HUD that said, hey, now is the time to send in your application package for the collaborative applicant for the continuum of care. And we find ourselves woefully understaffed in this current capacity. So what that provides us is an opportunity to talk a little bit about what could we do? What does this mean? To, we, Ms. Michelle Evans, her last day will be February 17th. We had two grant-funded housing navigator positions, young and upwardly mobile individuals that are off to greener pastures. We did have conversation with the Norman Housing Authority about the process of housing navigators and those positions and the value we saw and heard from our property owners when they were approached by our housing navigators to kind of highlight the opportunities that Section 8 housing vouchers mean to a property owner. So we were really interested in making sure that navigator effort did not come to an end with the departure of our two employees. The Housing Authority is very interested in advancing the housing navigator position as a function of the Housing Authority, and it does fit beautifully in that capacity. Our other staff position, Michelle's position, did get pulled in a whole bunch of different directions in the last couple of years, and the pandemic didn't help by any stretch. But every time we found ourselves at a point where a service needed to be provided and the need couldn't be met elsewhere, Michelle often stepped to the plate, and she was being pulled in many directions and very, very thinly until she just didn't have any elasticity left. HUD provides us with a plan when you're in this situation, and we distributed that document to the council on Friday last week. And what it says is, here are all of your options and alternatives as it relates to the applicant. Doesn't have to be the city of Norman. Can be any, any member of the continuum of care can become that applicant for the continuum of care. And we have 40 nonprofit participants in the continuum of care today. The process HUD lays out says, if you want to change who that collaborative applicant is, that's okay. You can notify HUD, and then HUD will work with the balance of the continuum of care to identify who that next collaborative applicant will be. During the transition from the current collaborative applicant to the future collaborative applicant, the current collaborative applicant will work hand in hand through that transition process. What we've learned over the last couple of years working through the pandemic is, the city of Norman, we're good at a lot of things. We're not good at everything. We are definitely not direct service providers to our homeless community. We have never been direct service providers. We are facilitators. We move money, and we're really good at building things, but we don't do the hands-on service delivery to those individuals experiencing homelessness in the city of Norman. And before we ran out and started a recruitment process, and honestly, that would probably take somewhere between 90 and 120 days to bring a body onboard if such a qualified body was out there in the applicant pool, it leaves us with a big gap. And before we just went out and kept doing exactly things the way we were doing, we thought, we need to have this conversation about how might we retool and where are our resources best applied? And I can tell you, when we talk about, we've never been here before. We have never been at a point in history where the Norman City Council has had access and resources to affordable housing dollars to be invested in Norman. And we are recognizing a great deal of staff time being invested in the identification of opportunities to provide affordable housing here in Norman. And we do see an opportunity to be most successful focusing our efforts on the provision of affordable housing options in Norman city limits. We haven't gone out and had a conversation with our continuum of care partners. I definitely did not want to go have that conversation until we had a conversation with our city council on a potential change in direction. We are highly vested in the continuum of care. We recognize that all of our nonprofit partners in the continuum of care, many of them, their funding is dependent upon their participation in this vehicle. And it's, it's, it's the model. It's the model HUD recognizes. It's the model recognized by the state of Oklahoma as the best way to provide these services to people, not just homeless people, but people of low and moderate income. So we think there is an opportunity to refocus what city staff focuses on and have that conversation with our continuum of care partners about interest among continuum of care partners to become that collaborative applicant for the COC. It's not a glamorous function, and I don't think it's all that labor-intensive. It comes with some administrative overhead value of about $12,400 a year. So definitely not a revenue maker or a revenue breaker either way. I do have concern about our ability to successfully recruit somebody with the skillset to jump in and be successful in the role of facilitating that continuum of care. We knew it took about two years' worth of grooming before Ms. Evans was ready for that task. And in today's environment, not quite sure. We've got a two-year worth of runway in front of us to make that transition successfully. So we understand how the process could work should the city notify HUD that we won't be the collaborative applicant going forward, but we're not going anywhere. Obviously, we're, we believe in the continuum of care and all that effort. It just, we may take this opportunity to tool it a little bit differently. I think our next step, if council sees an opportunity to maybe refocus, that we would have that conversation with all of our continuum of care partners and say, okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's talk about that collaborative applicant role and who might be best equipped to pick up that part of the effort and let us focus our energies on the acquisition and development of affordable housing, the facility side, and I think that's probably our strong suit, is the development on the facility side. So happy to answer any questions. It's, it's, we've, we've never been here before, and so it's uncharted for all of us, but our industry experts sitting here in the back of the room and definitely far more versed in what that transition might look like if council says, let's have that conversation before we just keep doing exactly what we're doing.
Has there been any interest from anyone to be the lead applicant?
I don't think we, I mean, we, we didn't roll out the conversation yet. We didn't want to put that cart in, in front of the horse, and that, that begins with just, this, this conversation would be step one. If, if council says, believes it's at least worth the exploration of that topic, we would begin to, you know, put together a meeting and have our COC partners join us, maybe even virtually, because 40 people in one spot at one time on the calendar is always a challenge. But there are COCs all over the country where the city government is not the collaborative applicant. So, I mean, that model exists out there in lots of places.
All right, Councilmember Hall.
So I have a couple of questions just as we think through this. Have we been the collaborative applicant the entire time that the COC has been in existence in Cleveland County?
And I'll look back to Lisa. Yes, we have been. So we.
And how far back does that go? Okay, 1995. So this is a big shift, a big transition. And as you said, you know, my understanding is, we originally had a homeless coordinator that we hired. When's the first time we had that position open?
Lisa, come on. A little institutional knowledge.
When, when, so we've been operating as the collaborative applicant for the continuum of care since 1995, but we haven't always had a homeless coordinator. Okay, so where did that function fall within the city staff before, with you? Okay, as a grant, as a grant writer?
Expanded the duties of the continuum of care from 1995. It was kind of like, oh, here, this is a cool concept. Used to, everybody just kind of applied for willy-nilly grants as they came up. And HUD looked to, let's, let's have more of a continuum to where the communities, you know, instead of having this agency apply for this, and this agency apply for this, let's set it up in a geographic boundary where they work together to determine what the needs of the community are. And then they began to codify that. And then when the HART Act came around in 2012 is when really the duties of the continuum of care and the collaborative applicant became official. And Michelle came on in 2014 as an intern for about a year, and then became full-time.
Okay, so she's been the only homeless coordinator that we've had?
Right. Before, yeah, Linda Price and I just kind of fit it in.
Right. So you worked it into your regular, you had many other responsibilities that, and you worked that in. Okay, so that's been the structure that our community basically has come, become accustomed to. And also, I just want to make sure I have the timeline right. So when the homeless coordinator position came online, that, she really, that, that was a staff of one? For a couple of years? And was, was that position funded by grant money too?
That, that position was funded under the CDBG program.
Okay.
Under our public service cap. And the accomplishments that we reported to HUD were not necessarily the duties of the collaborative applicant. It was the numbers of people that were housed by the activities of the continuum.
Okay. Okay. And then we were fortunate enough to add a technician?
When, when we received our first CARES grant, that position was funded with CARES grant for the Rent and Utility Program. Then it rolled into a general fund position. And then when we got our second allocation of CARES Act funds, when we expanded to the housing navigator.
And so those were two positions that we knew were going to only be funded for a two-year period, I think. And I think the council approval at that time, it gave us an opportunity to see how that would work. Relatively new positions. We had two people hired. One did not last very long. So we didn't even have the experience of filling one position for a few weeks, I think. And then the housing navigator, she really had only been up and running for just a few months, right?
Right, right. She was, she was here six or seven months and went back to, to a previous occupation that she had. When we advertised those positions, we had it for a two-year window. The grant is actually about six years long. We have to have hit certain spending benchmarks throughout the way, which, which we've been hitting. So in discussions with the Housing Authority, who's very interested in, in this, they could actually have benefit of this position for probably about three years.
So we have a transition plan for one of the four positions, basically? In an area that we know as identified by the GAPS analysis that addressing affordable housing, addressing getting more units online, having a position of that type, we can make that transfer? Okay, just to make sure I understand that right. Okay, so I guess what I'm really curious about is, you talked about the transition, and you mentioned that even if we chose to pursue hiring another housing navigator, it would be 90 to 120 days. And then you also spoke to the fact that there, if, if the decision is made to seek out another collaborative applicant, that we have a transition, there's some transition from the city in that role to whoever is identified as the next one. So who, is that going to fall on you? Okay, so.
And, and that's a, and I'm, we are fortunate that this lady has enough history in this organization and enough bandwidth to keep many plates in the air. She's administering about $5 million worth of grants, and the mission in those grants is to put that money on the street as efficiently as possible, and then the paperwork that goes with the distribution of that $5 million federal funding. So, I mean, it's definitely a full-time job all by itself. And the fact that we're going to lose three staff members within about three weeks of each other is, it's a big challenge, and we're hoping that on occasion we'll throw food over the door in our office to keep her working while we keep all those plates in the air.
Yeah. So that, that was kind of to my next point, because it's been more than a full-time job for Ms. Evans. And as you spoke to, not only was she doing what was her job description, which was administering all of the funding and doing all of the reporting and data collecting and all of, meeting all of the requirements with our funding, but she also was filling the gaps in places that just wasn't, for whatever reason, we just weren't able to address them with other community partners. So I think we're going to feel that loss also. So I guess what I'm wondering going forward, we've talked a lot about our focus on, shifting our focus and finally getting affordable housing on the front burner, which I think for many, many reasons is something that we want to be doing. And, you know, we've just recently done some discussion about that. So if we make this, this transition, what happens if we can't identify anybody that's willing to step up?
That's a very good question.
Not because they don't want to, but just their own capacity. Yeah.
You know, the collaborative applicant is kind of a two-way street. The city, we kind of defaulted into this and have maintained it all these years under the blessing of the continuum of care. The city can, can say, we, we want to step back as the CA, but our name is on that spot until the continuum themselves select a new collaborative applicant. And it's, it's, I think the information I provided, there's, there's the duties of the collaborative applicant, and there's the duties of the continuum of care. The lines get blurred a lot because what happens is, some of the duties of the continuum of care, there's really not an entity to step forward and do those. So the city has stepped forward and filled those gaps. The duties of the collaborative applicant are centered around the processing of the application for the, for the funding for the continuum of care grants. You know, point in time, things like that. HUD said that the city is actually mandated to assist in the transition and that the city of Norman will be the collaborative applicant until the continuum of care selects a new one. So that's what HUD says.
Yeah, not a, not a tomorrow thing by any stretch of the imagination. And I think that's probably just the reality of how fast the federal government operates, and HUD anticipates long lead times for a lot of that type of activity.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, since 1995, the city has actually worked very hard to build this up to what it is. And I would hope that the city, you know, even though we are at this, this watershed moment, would realize that it is our responsibility to make sure that this funding continues in one way or another, whatever the city has to do to ensure these agencies and the community that this funding remains.
Yeah. And I think it's important just to probably reiterate that for anyone who happens to be listening in tonight, that these HUD funds that we're getting, we really are the pass-through, that it's not money that's landing in the city. We're just managing the reporting and the distribution, but that we have a pretty well-oiled machine, really, of acting in that capacity and then distributing to certain lead agencies. So.
Councilmember Hall, in, in kind of that same vein, in, in what, what the city does really well and what we, I mean, we struggle with, recognizing the development of the Young Family Athletic Center and the Senior Wellness Center, the ability to say, look, we can hire a bunch of staff, but that's a space we're not really in, or we can go through an RFP and find operators who, that's what they do. They operate athletic facilities. They operate senior wellness programs. They have track records. They, they, this is what they do. We think the, the optimum utilization of resources are to, you know, on the facility side, and then let's go find the operators who can bring us success and, you know, and let our, our community benefit from the experiences these nonprofit agencies have developed over years. The value of the Rolodex they bring, the value of the programming they already fully understand. And, you know, learning while your feet are at the fire is, is a challenge. And the service recipients, they're not getting the best service available either. When it comes to the provision of, you know, warming shelter services, we recognize the model right up in Oklahoma City. The city provides facilities, and they have operators that come in and run these programs. And we see that as the best model going forward, because we're already seeing the benefits of such relationships with the Young Family Athletic Center operators and the Senior Wellness Center operators. When it comes to single-room occupancy, permanent supportive housing opportunities, Lisa and even fully staffed with Michelle and our having, and our housing navigators, we don't know how to operate those facilities. There are very successful operations of those exact facilities we're seeing in Oklahoma City right now with a private nonprofit operator at the helm.
And we've already been, I, I think we have already been making that transition just from all of the other things that we're working on as a council with the Mobile Crisis Unit and possibly purchasing vans, but we need an operator. So I think we have a really solid model, as you said, to what we do well and what we need to engage the community, you know, and who's out there to step up. So I think my biggest concern is, I think we're at a crossroads, and I think we definitely still are, haven't even begun to address all of the recommendations from the home-based study and a strategic plan. So I guess my, what, what I'm leading to is, is there any reason to consider, even if we're, if, even if we choose to not serve as the collaborative applicant anymore, because of these relationships, is there someone that needs to staff that in some capacity? Rewrite the job description? Does it get distributed across departments? You know, if we have vehicles or buildings, if we have, if we have an SRO building, if we get into providing some of the construction for affordable housing units, that, that sort of thing? Have we thought about, or have we even gotten that far? Have we thought about how, how, how does the city continue to get that work done?
So we, we recognize, you know, city council in the very recent past, we, we, council approved the position of the city forester. And at the time, we thought we knew what that meant, and we wrote the job description. And then when we plug the forester into the organization and into the community, we realized, wow, that's not what we thought. And we learned a lot, and our forester told us, here's what you really need. Here was what my job description was, but I spent about 85% of my time doing this. And we thought, oh, my gosh. That's the thing when we sit in the offices and try to come up with, well, what do we think we need? We give it our, you know, college best. But it's, it's time in the field that kind of dictate what that job really needs to be. And if we looked at what we were currently investing on the salary side and how we might invest that in our approach to securing additional affordable housing here in Norman, and that we, we use, there's a number of about 9,000 units short. I, I can't expect Lisa to be the only one out championing the cause to help us identify and secure permanent supportive affordable housing opportunities here in Norman. So I think it's a job description we'd love to, going to jump into based on what we've learned since Ms. Evans has been onboard and what worked well and what things we need to keep doing in perpetuity and other things we need to shift focus on. So I think that would be a job description we would definitely want to rewrite and retool, but in conversation with the continuum and what the, because we're always going to be a part of the continuum of care.
That was my next question.
We, we have to be, we are so invested in the organization, in the mechanism, and we, we do provide a role in, you know, facilitation and that type of thing. We're, we're too plugged in. We have first responders that are absolutely plugged into that role. The courts are plugged into that role. So we're never going to not be a part of the continuum of care.
So, yeah, that was really my next question. It seems like the city is going to have some kind of role, but not the role that we've all been accustomed to, or what our habit has been now since 1995. So I, I see that. So my other, you know, the other thing that we've wrestled with now since 2019 is recognizing the need for an emergency shelter, which is definitely still one of the high priority categories in our recommendations of GAPS analysis that we need to think about that going forward. And I think, you know, lost in the conversation over the last few years is literally the city stepped into that role because the need was recognized, and no one in our continuum of care partner world was able, for a variety of reasons, you know, that no one was raising their hand at the time to have a shelter. And so that's really when the city kind of dipped into that, because it was, not only did we need the emergency shelter, but it literally was an emergency. You know, it's like, okay, what are we, how are we going to cover this? And to your point, I think we've learned that we definitely can offer that, and, but it's been a bare-bones operation. We have been able to provide case management every single night. And, you know, I've been pretty outspoken about recognizing the need to continue to have a low-barrier shelter. And then, so how do we, how do we consider the transition of that too? Because Ms. Evans added that to her plate as well as an area of responsibility.
Absolutely, and that was just.
So how's that going to work out?
How we consumed Michelle in, in her employment. And she was at the shelter every night, and she was the one who got the phone call at 2:00 in the morning when the heater broke, and we have a person who's having, you know, an issue in the shelter, you know, who do we call? What do we do? That was her phone, you know, seven days a week, and that, that, that's a lot. Part of that recognition that we're going to develop a request for proposal for an operator for a facility. And we, we, we see where other partners who provide other shelter services, they're at or near capacity, which means all of those people are already accounted and cared for. And we're dealing with, as we talked about, when we were talking about the multifamily affordable housing opportunity, that zero-barrier need, the needs out there. It's going to be seven degrees outside. We know that, that needs absolutely out there. And to tell you how these thoughts evolve, as we cut the ribbon on a new hazardous waste disposal site, we stood in a metal building, and we recognized the speed at which a metal building can be developed and the flexibility that you can do in a steel building and insulate it, heat it, and cool it in whatever ceiling height you need. And at 3:30, we're standing in the hall realizing, oh, my gosh, we think we could actually build. And at three thirty, we're standing in the hall realizing, oh, my gosh, we think we could actually build a permanent facility, let's find the place, we have a couple of concepts for a place.
Mm.
Um, we think we have money in the bank to actually do. Now it's going to come down to, oh, my gosh, can we get an operator? You know, how do we do that to fill that need? We will do whatever we have to do to get through this season. Um, and, you know, I gotta be down there at the shelter booking people in, that's what's going to happen. That service is not going to not happen because of staffing. We will, we will toe the line, that's, that's what we do. Um, but just these conversations and the fact that everybody's eyes are open, we're constantly on the search for solutions to the problems we all recognize.
Mm-hmm.
And sometimes it has to just stare you right in the face before the light bulb comes on. So we think we'll be bringing you some agenda items here in the next handful of council meetings to talk about opportunities on the real property side and the, the development side of, of what, what could be a permanent facility. Um, and it could be a permanent facility that has other uses should, you know, other facilities in the future make themselves available. What could we use this metal building for if it, if it weren't the shelter ten years from now?
So, yeah, and finally, just to wrap up this, this line of thinking, um, you know, I think it's important that the community understands that we still have a commitment to that, but the role that we play is going to probably shift. Um, because we are good at maintaining, building, fixing, all those kinds of things. Um, but that this is really, to me, a call out to the community. We have a very robust continuum of care team with thirty to forty agencies, I think. We also have, um, you know, a lot of other, um, faith-based and other, um, advocacy groups that are at work and have been, you know, meeting a need um, for quite, for years, really, that work has been ongoing too. And so, you know, what sometimes can feel like a crisis can also be an opportunity to rethink how, what is the role of the city? And, you know, how do we continue to engage with our community and the continuum of care team? So I think that's really where we are, so.
Um, we'll answer questions all night long for council, always, always happy to do so. Where we kind of think the next step might be, if council recognizes an opportunity to look down that path, would be to, uh, schedule a conversation with our continuum of care partners and kind of put all that out on the table and see how those puzzle pieces fit together most effectively for all of our participants.
Um, and just one final comment, because I think most of you know that I was really involved with the Ad-Hoc Committee to Address Homelessness. And, um, through all of the discussions and all of the twists and turns that, um, you know, we've experienced as a community over the last two years um, and, and with the home-based study, um, one of the things that I've really been intrigued with, that I think is the right time to just kind of put this on the record in case anybody's out there that might be going, oh, I could do that. Um, I think we have a missing entity in Norman, too. Um, we refer to the Homeless Alliance in Oklahoma City over and over and over again. And I know, um, Ms. Craig has a great working relationship with, um, Dan Strong, the executive director. Um, and, you know, they, they are really in a position to be kind of the glue and connecting multiple agencies to kind of keeping it all rolling in, you know, pulling on the rope in the same direction. And we don't really have a comparable entity like that.
Correct.
And I've been intrigued really for over a year now is, is there anybody currently doing this work in Norman that is ready to change their mission or go in a different direction? Or is there some kind of collaborative, um, way that this might be the time to really pursue that type of thinking too?
It, it could be, yeah, the birth of an opportunity to work collaboratively with those success stories that we see in Oklahoma City to say, well, you train this group to do what you do. And at some point, somebody had to learn the hard way.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and now they've learned and they've grown and we're seeing successes and they're very measurable.
Well, they've been at it for twenty years.
Absolutely, and the ability for a, a new entity, uh, or an existing entity to say, we think we could serve in that capacity and not be cast off on your own solo, but to say, let's, let's work collaboratively with the Homeless Alliance and, and develop that type of infrastructure here in Norman.
Mm-hmm. So I think the bottom line is the city of Norman is going to continue to have a role in how we reduce homelessness in our community, but from a, a different perspective perhaps.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Peacock?
Well, just say thank you to Councilmember Hall for, uh, the excellent, excellent line of questioning. I think, uh, everything I was going to ask has been asked already. Um, I did have one thought, though, um, is, do we have the opportunity to use ARPA dollars to sort of jumpstart or use a seed money for an operator to basically get this kind of concept off the ground?
Um, Mr. Francisco, your thoughts? Um, Mr. Francisco does most of our reporting back to, um, the state and the feds on how our ARPA dollars are being programmed and spent.
Um, all of our research so far would indicate that under the guidelines issued by the Department of Treasury, um, provision for what, what they call disproportionately affected individuals by COVID, um, is more guided toward facilities. Um, and so we could use ARPA dollars for facilities, but not so much for operations as we understand it.
That's my question.
Uh, perhaps, uh, Ms. Craig, in, in terms of your insight and what federal dollars that have already been, um, entrusted to the city of Norman and what dollars we see in the pipeline on the federal side for, um, supporting communities of low and moderate income, on the operations side of warming shelters through a third party, what do you see as potential?
Currently, we're operating under, um, a second award of CARES money for the operation of the shelter. Um, that, that expires August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Um, the city has received home ARPA dollars, which does have a permanent housing supportive service element in it. It also has a construction type element, but it has to be for a non-congregate facility. So it'd have to be an SRO or apartments. Um, those, those are the, the two funding sources that I'm, I'm familiar with right now.
Um, and, and what I don't know if we know yet, in terms of, um, the, the alliance in OKC, I think we could probably put together a budget for what we think that operators' agreement would cost. The security we're already paying for, um, you know, and it's a couple of staff members to do intake, uh, just to make sure all the software is updated. I think it's a budget we could put together. And, um, you know, I'm confident that it's, it's, if it's a service we're going to be in, we can figure out a cost-effective way to do it. And even when we're talking to those potential operators to say, you tell us what all those funding sources are that help cover the cost of these programs where you're currently operating.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Holman?
Uh, just to be clear, we're not losing you, are we, Lisa, anytime soon?
Oh, God, no, please.
We're not losing you anytime soon, are we?
I, I'm sorry?
We're, you're not leaving your job anytime soon, are you?
No, we've, Jane and I, we've, we've decided she is not.
Okay.
So I don't know, depending on tonight.
I, uh, with a lot of the comments already made, I would just, uh, I would support having whatever conversations need to be had uh, to make sure that, uh, these services are being addressed. Um, and definitely I kind of see the city as the backstop when no other service is available or there's nobody else available to provide it or that can provide it, then that's when the city should step in and make sure that if nothing else, it's still going to be provided. We're going to be involved whatever way. Um, I think we do operate some pretty good services in Norman, but, uh, we do build some pretty good facilities too. And, um, it definitely sometimes helps to have people running those facilities that are experts, more so than our city staff perhaps, specific in those areas. So, uh, definitely want to make sure that no gaps will get bigger if we're, you know, whatever changes happen and that we're not leaving our nonprofit services in some sort of, you know, lurch or whatever by changing our role. Um, but definitely support having whatever conversations with all of our, uh, community partners that we need to have to make sure that we continue rolling on down the road and getting better. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Schuler?
Yes, so as I have been digesting this conversation and kind of trying to understand, I guess, where we have come from, where we are right now and where we might go in the future, um, I think one of the things that is a little fuzzy in my brain, it makes sense to me that we're at a pivotal moment, we need to figure out kind of what does the future of this look like? What is our role as a city? Um, how does this change? And we've gotten really comfortable in the city of Norman with how things have been functioning the last several years. Um, having a homeless coordinator, um, on staff and then building out a few more positions and filling in gaps that really weren't, as we've talked about, um, you know, in job descriptions for those, those members of staff. Um, but I think what I don't quite understand is the, and just, sorry. Um, so the collaborative applicant really is just, so I fully understand this, is the entity that is putting together the, the application for the whole continuum of care? And is the entity that is helping to coordinate the funds and then helping to distribute them? And creating
In a short, yeah.
In a short.
Yeah, the collaborative applicant actually acts on behalf of the continuum of care and communications with HUD and helps to coordinate and facilitate the HUD funding, the process that has to go through for those funds to be awarded.
Okay.
So.
So, and that is essentially what our homeless coordinator was tasked with doing? But was doing more?
Right.
As I understand?
Because as, you know, we, we all know that over the last several years, um, we have always had homeless in this community. And, and I get on my soapbox and I say that we have a major university and we have the state mental hospital. People are very used to seeing very unique characters walking around town with a backpack, but they blend it in.
Right.
But as the population grew, you began to see the tents, you began to see the shopping carts. And it's, it's a failure of the mental health system. You know, you have substance abuse issues, mental health issues that the agencies we have, as good as they are and as professional as they are, it is a system failure that we're facing right now. And as this became more and more visible, there was a need to start addressing these encampments. We didn't have encampments five, six years ago. I mean, there was always someone down at the river, but it wasn't visible within the community as it is now. You know, a lot of people will say, well, you know, food and shelter was right downtown, that was a problem. No, not really. Um, it is a community problem that has now blossomed into that everybody notices it now. And as these encampments, let's call them a tent, over by seven eleven pops up, there would be a call that would come to the Action Center that, you know, more times than not, it would need a police response, but then it also needed that human response. And that was where, um, Michelle stepped in with that, partnering with the police to go out and assess that individual and try to connect them with services. Um, and so that has evolved over and over the years. Um, you know, we stepped in and operated the shelter in the, uh, in the library three winters ago, very successful. Um, very short-term duration, we patched it together with duct tape and baling wire and it worked. Then the need was there again and, you know, we didn't have the library available to us. And so the location was, we were literally, literally down to our last days. And, uh, Jim Adair got with the manager and again, we made that facility work. Is it perfect? Oh, heck no, it's far from perfect. And if the city is going to remain supportive of this endeavor, then we kind of need to step our game up a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
But I think what the city needs to realize is that we're not trained professionals that do this. The service providers have the appropriate training. They really just don't have the resources to expand to where we need to be. We're good at building things, you know, finding money to build things. That's, that's the strength of the city. The people part of it is not anything that we're good at. Yeah, we patched it together, Michelle did an amazing job. They don't let me talk to clients because, you know, I get in all kinds of trouble, promise them all kinds of things. But, uh, but Michelle was very good at that, you know, partnered with, you know, the resources that the police department had. But now, because there's just too much for us to do and we're so limited, I think that this, this is the time that the city needs to decide, are we going to take our resources and help to facilitate those that are trained to do this, to do the jobs that they're very good at, while we can support them financially and/or by appropriating funding for resources to have the facilities that need to be done?
Yeah, okay. I mean, that's helpful because in my mind, what I'm trying to understand is how, how am I uncoupling? Like, what is the role of the homeless coordinator right now? And how that's wrapped into this conversation about us continuing to be the collaborative applicant? But what I think that I'm hearing and what I've been trying to figure this out is that there's, there is potentially an opportunity for us to continue to remain the collaborative applicant, but get out of some of the other potential human pieces and services and continue to operate as the collab, the collaborative applicant and be the pass-through and supportive of all of the nonprofit services and all of the members of our continuum of care in a different capacity. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes and no.
Okay.
That's the way I answer every question.
Sure.
Um, with the city as the collaborative applicant, it's clunky because as the collaborative applicant, you are charged with going through this HUD process. And it's, it's a nice little pretty picture of a line, but the lines between the duties of the collaborative applicant and the duties of the continuum of care get blurred because they depend on one another.
Mm-hmm.
And with the city as the collaborative applicant, we have really, once that application goes forward to HUD and is funded, it goes to the agencies. But yet the collaborative applicant and the continuum of care have to have this ongoing monitoring of the activities of that grant, but there is no teeth. And so it, it gets really frustrating trying to, you know, it, it takes kind of a strange kind of person to understand HUD lingo, um, trying to enforce HUD regulations on agencies that are trying to help people. I mean, I get it, you know, you have that person across your desk needing help, you're going to do everything you can to help them. But Lisa wants a report and your numbers don't add up. And it puts the city in a very, very awkward position for that. Instead of having it more, if there were an agency with the continuum that were to step up, then it would be more of a peer review type process.
Okay, that, that I think is really helpful to understand because I was just thinking like, okay, we could remain the collaborative applicant and do some things, but like, hearing you kind of, I guess, explain those lines and how they're blurred a little bit, um, I guess gives me a little bit more, um, understanding of why we need to kind of continue, to have this conversation about, is there another entity that will kind of take that on? Um, and I do think that as several other council members and city manager have said, like, we're not, we're not leaving this space in any capacity. Um, but refocusing where our efforts will be best
Right.
utilized and the way that we can support, um, you know, this type of work and be really targeted. So I, I definitely think that this begs a, a larger conversation about what that looks like. And I think it's going to be really critical, um, to figure out what does the tran, transition look like? And obviously, we will remain the collaborative applicant until a new one is selected. And that's been very clear, so, okay.
With, with the CDBG funds that we receive, the Community Development Block Grant Funds, we're required to have a homeless component. But HUD gives you just enough rope to hang yourself with that the, the entities get to determine what that is. And by golly, you know, we grabbed the brass ring and we did it all. But I think it's time to let someone else, and I think it would be very beneficial for the, for the continuum to work together to see what they can become. And we have some, some excellent providers that, that are outstanding that, that I, I almost feel that they've been kind of, you know, constrained by the overbearing city, for the lack of a better word. But, you know, such as like, you know, the continuum of care is actually geographic bounding, it's Cleveland County. So the city of Moore, they have a homeless component, they, they sit on They they sit on the COC board. Um, what I would see is that the city of Norman would have a seat on the board. We would go from being an ex officio member to a voting member, um, just another seat on the board. We would continue, um, my preference would be to con- continue the financial financial support of the welcome kits, the mattresses and gift cards that our program provides that people moving into housing. You know, there are things that 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 we could utilize our funding for that would be more of a direct impact to this entity as they as they go forward, serving the people that are that are being addressed.
Okay, yeah.
So.
Awesome. And then I'm also just supportive of trying to figure out what retooling the current, uh, I guess, language in um, a job description for
Mm-hmm.
you know, whatever that new position becomes, whatever we think is going to be
Yeah.
best suited for
So.
what this transition period looks like.
So.
Yeah, thank you.
So, uh, you're saying that there would still be a position within the city?
I mean-
Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Maybe.
Could be. A- and I think through that next conversation, it will help us fine-tune what additional staff support Lisa needs uh, to continue to, you know, keep the boat afloat and keep providing the best bang for the taxpayers' dollar when addressing the needs of this portion of our population.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be affordable housing. It could be, you know, tr- some, there there could be mo- a multitude of different options.
Mm-hmm.
That's not, you know, singularly targeted, but yeah.
Agreed.
Be getting into and who's going to be responsible for
Yeah.
tracking those things. And it could be across departments even, I think. I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
I don't see any other questions, but I want to take a moment to point out that our continuum of care works for the entire county.
Mm-hmm.
So we have been addressing, you know, we've been doing the work for other communities within Cleveland County. It's been fun, um, but I think, again, for that reason, there's just an another thing to look at of finding someone more appropriate to take on that role. So, Mr. Manager, it sounds like people are comfortable exploring that and
It feels like consensus.
It does.
And we'll begin scheduling those meetings at the next available opportunity.
And I I liked your perspective about now we have a better idea of what we need so we can rewrite the job description. Yes, Ms. Craig?
Yeah. I I just need to clarify that the continuum of care actually selects the collaborative applicant. Um, we can, we can resign, but we're it till they find another one. We don't get to pick who that is, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments about this item? Seeing then, we'll move on to item two, a presentation on pattern zoning.
Thank you, Council.
I was really hoping you'd be like wearing plaid or something. Get it?
Sorry, what?
Stand up. Thank you, Lauren. All right. Uh, okay. We will turn it over to you.
Awesome. Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, Mr. Manager, council members, it's wonderful to be here with you today. Thanks so much for inviting us over. Uh, Councilmember Peacock, special thanks to you for helping us out. Uh, my name is Matthew Hoffman. I'm the Director of Urban Design with NBL Planning out of Fayetteville, Arkansas. Uh, I'm joined with Matthew Petty here, also with Fayetteville. Uh, just to introduce ourselves real quick, I'm I'm a former planning commission chair uh, for the city of Fayetteville. I've been an architect in town there for about ten years and and mostly worked on uh, sort of downtown issues, urban design, um, and planning. Mr. Petty is a twelve-year and ten-month member of the city council uh, in in the city of Fayetteville who uh, just recently resigned, uh, actually to 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 work on these issues, so I'm really glad to have him here with us as well. Uh, and and he and I actually got to know each other working uh, for the University of Arkansas at the Community Design Center. So, uh, these are issues that we've been working on for quite a while. And I want to say just a couple of things before I I turn it over to to Matthew about sort of why why we're here, why are we interested in this work? There there's there's really two main things that I want to hit. Number one is that we we strongly believe that the strongest form of public engagement is one where you actually give people the tools to pi- participate in the positive evolution of their own neighborhoods. So, this is kind of a fundamental shift away from traditional planning techniques where you're simply soliciting feedback from members of the public. We believe that there's an opportunity here for the city to actually forge a partnership with sort of the doers in in the community, the the people who are going to actually do the things that we need done uh, to execute on our plans. So that's number one. The the second thing is that we are a design-first office. We we place design at the center of everything we do. Um, and we have a a some specific reasons for doing that. We we've conducted visual preference surveys in several different states. Our our colleagues have conducted visual preference surveys across the country. And we know that if there's one thing that actually brings sort of super majorities of people together across the country, it's a a shared aspiration for quality design. So quality civic design, uh, conventionally beautiful architecture, this is something that almost everyone universally agrees on. So if you're going to tackle something that's that's as difficult as, you know, providing a, you know, for a nine thousand unit shortfall in in affordable housing, uh, you've got to start with some common ground, and we think that that's what design offers. So, um, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Petty.
Good morning. We are here to talk about patterns, not paisley or gingham or plaid, solids count, but no, we're here to talk about land uses, a different kind of pattern, but one that we hold dear, here, hold dear to our heart. Uh, Matt may interrupt or 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 jump back in, just as slides go, that's how we present these things as we go around, so I'll be the main, but if Matt jumps in, just know he's not being rude, he's not, he's not interrupting me, that that that's how we present, so we make sure we don't leave things out. Um, so for today's study session, we wanted to do uh, an overview of what a pre-approved building program is, or what we call a pattern zone. Uh, there are some other larger cities across the country that are doing pre-approved building programs, but they're limited to backyard units, to accessory dwel- dwelling units, and occasionally some townhomes or or smaller single-family buildings. What we have is a program that works for a much wider variety of buildings. What we, what we might say, everything from very small scale to middle scale, or in urban planning, they ca- they call it missing middle because it just doesn't get built a whole lot anymore, even though it used to be built quite a bit. And we want to talk to you about why we're doing this, why we think this is important, and how it can be implemented in cities like Norman, and some of the lessons that we've learned in other cities. If you were on the prior meeting that we did a few weeks ago, th- three or four weeks ago, some of this is going to be familiar to you, but we'll present it just a little bit differently, so a little bit of refresh. Um, and for those of you who haven't seen any of this before, that's okay. We're going to start right from the beginning and 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 go through the nuts and bolts and and the important parts. And we'll have time for questions, any type of questions that you have at at the end. We'll just do our best to answer those in in good faith. Uh, this is about a thirty-minute, maybe thirty-five minute presentation, depending on kind of what what we go through, this what we'll go over. I'm really focusing on why why we're doing this and what we learned in other cities before we talk kind of about the nuts and bolts of how how this works. So first, we we already actually heard a little bit about this in the in the prior agendas, outsiders, that was really interesting. Uh, and we also have heard a little bit about this in s- in terms of just talking to to some of you individually. What we've seen in other cities seems like it's true, at least a little bit in Norman as well, which is that you've changed some rules in the past, you've made different things allowed, but the market isn't building exactly what you have said you wanted to do with those code changes or in those master plans. And in our experience, uh, both as uh, people who have worked intimately in the city development review processes, as people in the design profession who consult with developers, and also people who have built some of our own projects, what we've observed is that really applicants out there don't just decide what to do based on what you allow them to do, right? They make decisions based on a couple of different dimensions. The most important ones being what's convenient and what's marketable. In Fayetteville, we saw this play out very closely, where we went through years of major updates and then smaller amendments to try and make things better, to try to get the market to do what was called for by our citizens in our master plans. But at the end, even today, and for several years, they use what, a a a lot of applicants use what's called in Fayetteville, the lot split loophole, which allows you to build a number of units on a lot, on an administrative lot split. It's the easiest way to get an entitlement. And so even if a fourplex or a corner store is allowed, they simply don't do it. The majority of market actors use the lot split loophole to get through the exempted process. And so that's what we wanted to do. That's why we thought we needed something new besides a conventional zoning and development regime. Uh, the way zoning and development is done in most of America was invented in the fifties, was pioneered in the sixties and seventies, and was only reinvented in the two thousands. All right, so this is all relatively new as far as figuring out good systems, good ways to operate places. And we think it's okay to try to come up with something new and something that might work differently, and that's kind of the spirit in which we've done this. How can we change what's allowed and convenient at the same time so that the market delivers what we've actually called for? That's the question. Second thing that we've observed is that when places change, they really change in a lot slower way, in a lot more deliberate way than the manner in which we sometimes talk about them. Lots of times, in mo- in lots of different cities, people will talk about a downtown development as if, once they get the master plan done and they get the right people in the room, the rest will just happen. And they'll respond, we'll recruit the right people, and the rest will just, it'll just happen, the m- the market will do it. And we have this idea in our head that it'll happen kind of, kind of like that, right? That it'll just be a couple of years and everything will be different and our master plans will be in place. But usually what we see is that it takes a trajectory of ten, fifteen, or even twenty-five years before neighborhoods really transition to their next, to the next generation, you might say, of 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 what they're meant to be, of their own destiny. And so we want to acknowledge that and try to take advantage of it and design a zoning and development regime of codes that acknowledges that and plays to it directly. So we might call that incremental development. When we implemented a program like this in Bryan, Texas, we were looking at a two-square-mile area with an average density of about three structures per acre. So that is less dense than most suburbs, as because there's a lot of teardowns that had happened in the past and so on and so forth. What we found through this study was that if we only tailored the rules to building more of what was already there, we could dramatically increase the number of of housing units that were on offer, and we could achieve densities that were familiar to people who already lived there. So we weren't violating their sense of place, but that had enough people to support commerce on the corner or transit on the corridors or any number of other public or 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 commercial improvements. And that's really what we're talking about, is how do we change these places into self-sustaining places? And what we say is that the best way to do that is incrementally, according to a plan, a principled plan, not all at once. Even if you can get it done all at once, it's very risky. What if you try and you fail in the middle of it? For example. It just affects so much to try and do things at scale all at once. If you allow yourself a little time, kind of the natural order of time, ten, fifteen, twenty years, and can plan on that, that horizon, we can do some amazing things. It's getting a little finicky here. All right. Here's the basics of a preapproval program as we conceptualize it. We can do things a little bit differently, and there are a lot of different kinds of knobs and dials and settings to turn in the control room of, uh, when we're designing a program, but these are the ones that we always want to hold true. First, what we call a pattern zone or a preapproval program, it doesn't replace what you're already doing. And that's the first point we want to make. It exists alongside the kinds of reviews that you're already doing. So if we're talking about a pattern zone in an area where you have a form-based code, that's fine. Projects can still be approved under the form-based code with the review process you already have, but you have an independent expedited review program for pre-approved buildings. It exists alongside. And that same kind of independent existing or coexistence can work with conventional zoning. So whether we're talking about uh, new suburbs or older suburbs out on the edge of town, or whether we're talking about main streets in the neighborhoods that are adjacent to them, a preapproval program can be designed for any of those conditions and can be designed to work with the codes that you already have. Second, it's a parcel-by-parcel approach. And what that means is that we can go in and we can pre-approve a number of buildings, a set of buildings, a list for every parcel. So there's still optionality. Somebody can do their custom program, their custom building program that's already allowed under your code, or they could select from this list. And we treat parcels that are special, we treat them special. Corners, for instance, are special. The entry street, the main street that enters or exits a neighborhood, that is a special street, it's a special threshold, so we don't have to do blanket zoning. We can really tailor these things to parcel-by-parcel approach. Point three is huge, and this is different than almost any other uh, uh, system that's out there. A preapproval program, a pattern zone is completely voluntary for applicants. No one, if you adopt this program, no one will be forced to use it. They can still submit applications under the same zoning and development regime you have on the books today. And if they want to opt in to use a pre-approved building that comes with some extra things like site diagrams, they can do that. It's voluntary. In exchange, it means that they have to meet supplemental criteria that you set as a city. So in a sense, in an explicit sense, a pre-approved building, an application, is a deal that an applicant makes with you. And they say, I am going to submit and construct these uh, these higher-quality details on the site in the building itself, as have been pre-approved, and in exchange, I'm going to get an expedited review, and not just a permit at the end, but a set of plans, a set of plans that comes with the permit. Think about what this means for a second. Imagine you're someone who has lived here for a while and has dreamt about better days for the parcels at the end of your street or the next street over. And you've thought to yourself, you know what, somebody ought to do something about this, and you come into some inheritance, or you get a big bonus at work, or whatever, you decide you're going to be the person that does that project. But you don't know who the land use lawyer is, you don't know the best architect or engineering people in in town or in the, in the region. You don't know anybody at City Hall, which planning clerk you should talk to that's really going to tell you how to get started and when you've made a mistake and be honest with you. You don't need to know that anymore. If you have a pre-approved program, a pattern zone, somebody without that kind of expertise and prior knowledge can walk in, they can get something more or less off the shelf that you've approved, but not just approved in a form sense, it's not just a stamp that says get going, it's quality architecture that's been vetted. So you can be proud that somebody is going to build that program. And so can the neighbors. So at the end, what we're talking about here is a licensed set of architecture with some associated components to make building appropriate infill projects easy. We want to show you some of the architecture, and to get started, we want to pass out some of these models. And Matt, you could just maybe set them on the end and kind of let it, let them filter down, or pass them out as you need. And so, we're going to show you uh, the buildings that got pre-approved in Bryan, Texas, and then tell you a little bit about the Bryan, Texas program, and we'll tell you a little bit about the program in Claremore, Oklahoma, just outside of Tulsa. So these on the screen uh, ha- have been approved in Bryan, and the ones that are being passed out have been approved in either Bryan or Claremore. And we designed these programs to be flexible. Remem- remember, this is about making things voluntary and making things useful, right? Making things convenient. So let me tell you a little bit how we do that with buildings. You see on the screen here, we have uh, two two renderings. The one on the bottom, let's talk about that first. We call that building a flex house. It's a flex house, which means it's a modest, single-family structure. It's about sixteen hundred square feet, but it would be just as accurate to say that it's a modest duplex. We insist that it can be cons- that that it's constructed with all of the plumbing, all of the details, all of the framing that you need to convert it either from a duplex into a single-family house, or from a single-family house into a duplex at any time in its life cycle. So it is meant to be a home that someone can live in forever, even when their kids move out. It's meant to be a home people can look, move into as a starter home and rent out the upstairs so they can take an extra vacation, there's a, so that they can pay off their student loans a little bit faster. It's meant to be a place where people can move in with the whole family and then keep whenever their kids are gone. It's meant to really adapt to make sure that a neighborhood stays resilient no matter what happens in time. The one on the top, those are cottages. So there are three buildings in the top rendering. That comes off of one building. In Bryan, Texas, we found this beautiful, modest, it's like seven hundred or eight hundred square foot cottage. Everybody loved it. It ended up in all the photographs that we talked about, that we asked people about when we asked them to tell us which buildings they really like. And so what Matt did is he took that and we used that as a precedent, and we turned that into uh, in into three other buildings. So it's not just a cottage, it's also a cottage duplex, it's also a garage apartment, and it's also a fancier cottage duplex. And all four of those versions, the backyard cottage, the two duplexes, and the garage apartment, were all pre-approved off of that one notion that everybody likes this cottage. So this is very flexible. Anybody who submits for a preapproval application can choose which one of these cottages they'd want to construct depending on their site. Here's two more. These are the last two we'll show you. You may recognize some of these models. The one on the bottom here, this is a walk-up, this is a set of walk-up apartments. This is a set of walk-up apartments. So this also comes with a lot of flexibility. Every rendering, every building you see in that rendering, the one up front with the color, the one in the back, straight behind, the one in the back off to the side, those were all pre-approved versions of a walk-up apartment. That walk-up apartment is designed by Matt so that it can face the street with the narrow end. It can face the street with the broad end. It can go in the middle of the block. It can go on the corner of the block. You can put the corner, the parking on the side in the street or in the rear. It can have a corner store. It can be entirely residential. It can be three stories or it can be two stories. Very flexible, right? There's a framework and then a bunch of buildings put on top of it and they all get pre-approved. The one up top is one of our favorites. That's a house that was designed to fit in with single-family neighborhoods. And I bet Matt wants to say something about that.
Yeah, just a word about, actually both of these types, but particularly the one on top, which is floating around here somewhere. Yeah, that one. There you go. So that is, we call it an apartment house and it's actually a three-unit building. So there's two-bedroom apartments on both the ground floor and the second floor and then a one-bedroom sort of in a lean-to back behind. That was developed as a sort of typological response to an acute issue that was happening in Bryan, Texas and that we also see happening in other college towns here, in Fayetteville, really across the country with what we call stealth dorms. These are, and you guys are familiar with these. These are single-family houses in name only, right? So it's a single-family house that has one kitchen and a whole bunch of bedrooms with en suite bathrooms. And, you know, it's not immediately obvious where the issue with these places might be, but what we've found tends to happen, and you see this in code enforcement data, is that, you know, if people weren't best buds before they moved into their bedroom, within a few weeks, they are best buds and suddenly they're having big parties, right? So just the typological shift of moving away from a common kitchen and all common public spaces in one, you know, large, single-family house to a smaller format where you've got one- and two-bedroom apartments, you know, it's something that is relatively small and doesn't mean a whole lot from a bottom line in terms of a development perspective or pro forma for a developer to look at. But it can have, it can bring huge dividends in terms of what it feels like to be in that neighborhood and how compatible that structure is with everything that's come before it and everything that could come after it. So I just want to point that out because it's a lot more than just, you know, great rafter-tail details and really competent column capitals. And we care a lot about all that stuff. We make sure that we do all that right. But, you know, the way that you arrange these things and the way that they fit into neighborhoods deserves just as much thought and is just as important a part of the program.
I think one of our favorite anecdotes that happened over and over again in Bryan when we were doing town halls in the high school gyms and so on and so forth was people would look at the images of that building and eventually the 3D models and they would say, "There's no way that's not just a house." They'd say, "You're kidding me. You're lying to me that there's three apartments in that building." And, you know, we, hand to God, no, that's what it was designed to do. It was really designed to fit in and we're proud that it did. And in Bryan, they had some really cool enforcement data. They knew that if you control, if the number of people was the same, the streets were the same, proximity of the university was the same, but you compared a stealth dorm to a managed apartment complex, the number of enforcement calls the city got was way different. Way different. And so our theory with that was, like Matt said, if we could just make sure everybody had their own entry and their own kitchen, would that change the social dynamics of those places? And we're excited to see that tested. So when we do this, we can't just do architecture. We have to do some other things. But when we do architecture, I just want to show this real quick. These are those four types of the cottage that I mentioned just a second ago. The fancy duplex, the simple duplex, the garage apartment. We just put a garage under it and then the single stories. You can imagine, this works in a backyard. It works on a small parcel as a primary dwelling. It works in a side yard. It works at the end of the driveway. It becomes really flexible and it's just that much more that somebody can add to a site.
Sorry to hop in here, Matt. Just one more thing about that building. There's an idea here about fitting into neighborhoods that's really important. And that is that it's, you know, everybody thinks that when you add intensity or when you add density to a neighborhood, it means bigger buildings. And we actually take the opposite approach. That is a very small building. It's got a 550-square-foot footprint. And what it allows us to do is it allows us to keep the existing fabric. We can put that building on the same lot that, you know, a historic bungalow is or some other historic building. We can add to that in the backyard or in some other format and actually add density with smaller building types.
And the size is important too. In Fayetteville, those are the only sized buildings that are new construction that you can still buy that are less than $200,000. And that is still a lot of money to a lot of people, right? It's still a lot of money. But if you are somebody who insists on a new construction building or that's the only thing that's available, there are a lot more people that can afford a $200,000 house than can afford a $500,000 house. So the market for those, when they get constructed, is lightning-fast. People love those sized buildings because they can get into them right away and they can have a really low mortgage payment compared to other new construction, right? So they have a place. They shouldn't be everything, but they have a place. We're able to do some other really cool things in Bryan. Bryan had a lot of large parcels, right? And it's a little complicated to try and answer a question about what should we pre-approve for very large parcels when so many different things could fit on them. Well, one of the answers we had was we should allow what we called courtyard subdivisions or what you might call pocket neighborhoods. And these are fairly easy to do from a multifamily perspective, but to really make them work in the marketplace, you have to allow every structure to be transacted on a fee-simple basis. The same way every other house gets bought and sold. They have to be treated the same so that they can get the same kind of loan and so on and so forth. And so here, for example, you see a couple of pocket neighborhood formats for the cottage building that we just showed you. And depending on the size, because this is a voluntary opt-in program, we can impose new sensible rules for these kinds of projects. And we communicate those in graphics like this with some annotations and then with some backup actual code language that actually controls. So here you see, for example, two things that are interesting. For one, they had no parking controls whatsoever and they were having four or five pickup trucks being parked in front of every single one of their stealth dorms. And so the streets were totally changing, right? They were turning into parking lots with buildings. And so they wanted a way to maybe make that a little bit better for new development. And so here, they have their first rule that requires parking to the side or in the rear, which is not something they wanted to or were even interested in requiring for everyone. But we're only talking about what can be pre-approved. And so for things the city was willing to pre-approve, they said, "This higher standard is worth including." And so they included that in their supplemental criteria. And we took it a step farther. They had no alleys, but they wanted alleys. So they said, "And if you opt-in to this program, you also have to create a cross-access easement," which isn't important for every community, but was very important to them. They had no statutory authority to require that generally, but they can require it in a voluntary program that's their preapproval system. And so this is how they hope to retrofit alleys, as an example. You can do other things. We did really banal things too, like we set new rules in place for where trashcans go because they didn't have those before, right? And they wanted us to experiment in this project with a rule that would work. And so we did things like that too. Real quick, just want to show you this. This is a map of where the walk-up building is pre-approved. So the walk-up building is kind of, it's an intense building for most neighborhoods, right? It's two or three stories. It's apartment flats. And so it's not appropriate strictly everywhere. But it's appropriate certainly on places that are centered on corridors or places that are the edges of growing neighborhoods. And that's what you see here. What we were able to do is, we were able to say if it's purple, three stories is totally appropriate and that's pre-approved. And if it's pink, only two stories is appropriate because it's too interior to the neighborhood. So we had a reason for it. And we just show you this as an example of all the kinds of things we can control in a real granular way. So when we say block-by-block and parcel-by-parcel, we really mean it. Okay, so let's talk about nuts and bolts. We showed you some of the components, but let's really talk about why we're doing this, okay? Preapprovals mean, in theory, because it's not just a permit, because it's a set of plans that goes with the permit, there's quite a bit of savings. So this is an example from Bryan. This is a fourplex that got constructed. These are $20,17. Okay, so it's a little outdated today. But in that sense, we'll present the conservative case. We're only talking about architecture. We're not talking about structural engineering. We're not talking about mechanical engineering. If you've got bad soils or a stream through the site, like this doesn't apply. But if you have a typical site on a fourplex, we would expect the savings to come out to around $5,000 per unit or more in direct savings. Those are fees that don't have to be paid and can be translated to a reduced lease rate or a reduced sales price. That doesn't count the time saved in getting to market that much faster. So you can imagine the process now. Someone reads a report that says Norman is short a couple of thousand housing units. They say, "That's an opportunity for me. I know just the place. I've already got some land under investigation." Then they go out and they have to do the design. They have to have all the conversations. Then after they've got all that done, they have to go through the entitlement process. To save all of that is six to nine months in actual work. And we don't even put a dollar value on that because how could we? But it's a lot more than $5,000 per unit. Now, we're talking about a fourplex here. We talked about a single-family house. The savings aren't nearly as high. You can buy a plan for a single-family house off the shelf today and go through a fairly expedited review in most cities. The savings on a 12plex are going to be a lot more than this, right? The more complicated the building gets, the more value we've got in a program like this. Okay, let's talk real quick about some things we learned. First, we're already starting to get there, but you might be asking yourself, like, who is really going to build these things? And like, what buildings should we even pre-approve? Well, there's a whole process to answering that second question, but the answer to the first about who's actually going to use a program like this, we think of the user groups as there being two user groups. First are your professional applicants. These are people who are already building buildings. You might think of them as boutique builders, probably primarily single-family residences, but, you know, they're doing anywhere from a half dozen to a couple of dozen of these things a year, you know? So they're not the mega builders, but they're still very successful. And then we also, what we call amateur applicants, and these are people who are probably only ever going to do a passion project in their whole life, maybe just one or two. It might just be an add-on on their house, you know? It might only be that, but it really adds up. And what we found in Bryan and in Claremore is that both groups want different things. And the people who are already builders, they're looking for a way to simplify their process and to make it, to lower their risk for trying something new. So they either want to make it easy so they can do more units or they want to try and do a different kind of building that they haven't tried before. And if that process of trying something new was easier, they would. And that's what we've seen. Almost all the inquiries in Bryan that have come from quote-unquote professional applicants have been for the walk-up building. And conversely, almost all the inquiries from quote-unquote amateur applicants have been for the smaller buildings. Especially the flex house and the cottage. This is a little bit complicated in Bryan because they don't even really have a review process for single-family buildings. And so the value add on a lot of that kind of amateur class of buildings really wasn't there in Bryan. That's been a lesson learned. In Claremore, just outside of Tulsa, they approved theirs on December 6. When we last checked in with them at the beginning of December, they had four projects in the pipe. Tulsa World reported a couple of weeks ago they had more than 20. So that's a significant jump. It's a super-successful program so far. If it hasn't already, we haven't checked in in the last 45 days or so. If it hasn't already, we'd expect a permit package that's already been issued in Claremore. Claremore is a lot different than the process in Bryan. And this is something that will help us make this study session successful for us if we move forward, is to know what approach is best for Norman that we should think more about. In Bryan, it was very, very, very public engagement-focused. They did not have a bunch of new plans for us to rely on and to build on top of. So we started not quite from scratch, but almost from scratch on public engagement. And so making sure that the public got what they wanted from the front end and doing the values discovery and all of that for the public so we had the right vocabulary was really important. In Claremore, they had recent history of popular plans being adopted, very recently. We came right in on the tail end. And so in Claremore, we moved into a pilot project-focused process. And instead of trying to do a bunch of discovery on the front end, we did most of our vetting with the public, kind of in the middle to the end of the project when we had plans and programs to show and we had pilots that were already vetted and ready to go in for review. Very different, very different processes. And the one in Claremore was quite a bit shorter than the process in Bryan, but they both produced good results. Okay, so now we'll show you kind of what the core product is and then we'll be kind of in the wrap-up on the presentation. So in Bryan and Claremore, this is still a new technique. It's still very new, even though we started in Bryan three years ago now. In Bryan and Claremore, we were really trying to pioneer this from the very beginning. And so there, what we did was we custom-produced architecture for each of those communities. Matt was the lead designer with a couple of colleagues on a limited basis. And each one of those buildings was produced directly from that process. Now, that has a couple of limitations. Doing custom architecture is fairly expensive. Cities have a limited budget, especially when they're small cities. Claremore only has 17,000 people in it, for example. And what we saw in our post-planning reviews is that people want more options. So even though we vetted, for instance, every house that has been pre-approved and people have said they really like it, whether it's the exterior details or the interior layouts or whatever, when they walk in the door, the questions they ask are, "Well, I really wanted this third bedroom. It's really important to me. It's critical. I can't have a house without it." Or they say, "Well, I need a bathroom that's right by the master bedroom," or whatever it is, right? And for them, it's make or break. And they just have to have more options because the plans, if they modify the plans we've given them, they don't get the expedited review anymore. So they just need more options. So we had to find a way to increase the number of buildings that could be pre-approved. And we kind of saw the same thing from the professional class of applicants, but they have the resources to modify the buildings. And that's okay with us. That's the way we set up the program and so that the buildings can be modified. But again, it kicks them out of the expedited process when they make a major modification to a building. So again, we find ourselves driven to come up with a program that accommodates more options on the front end so that people can stay in the expedited system. And so this is what we come up with to do that, to try and triangulate typical budgets with the need for more options. What we're doing now is we're curating a very broad catalog of buildings. And then cities can, through a process, short-list buildings out of that catalog, dozens. Just in terms of your mental model, think, you know, say 20 to 30 buildings. And can, through the program, we put it online so that people don't have to reference a PDF that might have been amended or so on and so forth. It doesn't have to sit on the shelf anymore. Instead, people can type in an address. They can see what buildings are pre-approved, all the cross-reference codes, so on and so forth. And then with one click, they can look at the site diagrams. They can put all that into a package. And when they've selected the building for their parcel with one click, they can send it off in an email inquiry to your planning clerk and get the process started with an almost entirely complete application. And if you've ever interviewed a planning clerk, or if you will in the future, ask them how often people come in just asking, "What do you need me to bring you?" And so these are the kinds of problems we're trying to solve. We really are trying to make it easy. And it's not just plans and permits that are included. just plans and permits that are included. It's the marketing renderings that are needed for people to go out and to raise money, to go to the banks, or to go to an appraiser, or to go to an equity investor. We really are trying to make it easy with this. And so the new model is a subscription service that includes access and maintenance of a portal just like this, and that allows you for the same price as what we would deliver a handful, four, five, or six of custom-designed buildings before. We can now deliver dozens for a city to use. And that comes with a lot of other benefits, like some of your buildings aren't useful, people don't like them. Well, when the year change is over, you're just going to amend the subscription, and you're going to replace the buildings people aren't using with buildings that you think people would use, right? Or if a building gets too popular, and you're tired of seeing it because the program's too successful, well, we'll just roll it out, right? We'll decommission the building, and we'll commission something else into it. So this brings a lot of flexibility that just didn't exist These are the kinds of questions that we usually get whenever we talk with cities. At this phase, when we're just exploring, we can cover any of these questions tonight or anything else we got. And we'll just end with this, that, you know, the process for doing something like this looks a lot like a typical planning process, right? There are going to be differences in terms of how we engage the public, how we engage each of you, how we engage your departments in a discovery phase and so on and so forth. But the way we work is we try to find out as much as we can in terms of what your needs are and what your current challenges are. We make a best attempt kind of from behind the desk, and then we come back and we vet it, and we find all the ways, you know, that we kind of guessed wrong or that need to be corrected, whether that's on a parcel-by-parcel basis or a line-by-line basis in the recommendations. But that's more or less how we do it. It's a very flexible process. And again, just remember this, a preapproval program, it's opt-in, it's voluntary, and it coexists with the kinds of codes you've already got. So whereas right now, you've got codes that are minimum standards, and you say to everybody, "It's the law. You have to do at least this well or better," and you're trying to convince people to do a better job all the time, this reverses that conversation, because now the easiest thing to do is a reference standard. And now people are trying to do at least as well as the very easy and convenient expedited pre-approved programs. And so it really changes the market from a race to the minimum standard to a race to the expected standard. It's a whole new way of interacting with the market. So that's it. We don't want to take all the time with the presentation. We want to end it there and take any questions that you've got and see where we can go next. We stand ready to be a resource.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman?
So mine is just kind of a statement. I'm not a gambling woman, but I would bet that you guys are very familiar with strong towns, if not big fans.
That's a fair bet, yeah.
Hearing it's just strong towns to me. You had me at incremental growth. I'm a big fan of micro-development in urban areas based on need and not greed. So I'll be curious to see how Ms. Hudson feels, and if we can maybe piece it into the fold, if you have feelings. If this is something that would work for Norman, is this something we could see moving forward?
Thank you, Jane Hudson, Planning Director. So I think this is amazing originally, and anyone can stop me if I get off track here. But originally, our hope was that this might be something that could be worked on, examined, you know, thrown into the mix of the admin delay that we're working on. You know, we're working on those corner lots. That's really something that we've been struggling with as we've gone through with the Center City Form-Based Code. I'm going to be very honest. After the presentation, amazing presentation, the information is overwhelming. I don't see how we're going to squeeze this into the corner lots within the six-month admin delay. I honestly don't. I think, I mean, I just, I'm not sure. I'll let them respond to that, if that's something that, you know, that you guys want to talk about. But I mean, looking at the corner lots that we have, I mean, you guys are going to have to come in and assess all of those corner lots, or maybe some designated corner lots. I'm just, I'm not 100% sure that we have the time to get this done in this six-month delay. I think it's wonderful, but it might be something that the Ad Hoc Committee continues to talk about after we get out of this admin delay.
We could lay out some thoughts about that with no answers, of course, for something like that, then.
So if the priority is to get something like this implemented on a limited basis during the period of the admin delay, our first answer would be never say never, even though it's at least not right away. Although it is a quick timeline, and as professionals who work with cities and have worked with our own city, we're really familiar with all the different ways, not just delays, but also delays can happen. There are so many ways that things can take a little bit longer. That said, we have a couple of different ways of approaching things to get started quickly. And what we call it is a quick start with a capital Q and a capital S. And this is a process we used in Claremore. So at the end of it, Claremore ended up with a full-featured pattern zone. But right up front, we identified buildings that would work for a specific pilot project, and we got those pre-approved right away, first order of business. So we pushed everything else in the scope back after that. So if the task was to address every single corner lot in the area, in the admin delay, we would say, "Okay, we need to have a conversation. It's going to be a long one. Let's learn about that." And at the end, we might say no, or might say, "You know what? We got this, and we're going to get launched." If it's on the table, and the admin delay is really the deadline, we can look, as he said, at a select, a shortlisted number of properties. And if we could start with some confident assumptions that then we could work on and then come back with you for vetting, that might be a way of accomplishing something meaningful in that time period. Now, that's not to say that the quick start way is better than what we might say is a comprehensive way. But it's, we like it. It's an option if we can all be on the same page and can trust one another about the extent to which we're going to try to accomplish something on that period. And the second thing I'd say is we would definitely want to make sure we set that up as an experiment for study that is ready to be extended if it's successful.
Members of the council, just a concept, as staff talked about procurement procedures, how can we engage? The concept of a pilot program makes the engagement with this particular group pretty easy to get in there contractually. And then, you know, it's a pilot. We've got some corners we have very specific interest in. Focus it. And, you know, depending on council's interpretation and recognition of success, then that contract can be expanded going forward. But we think we can get it papered up relatively quickly under those focused conditions.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay. Councilmember Peacock?
Yeah, I guess I'll just continue that kind of line of thinking. When I first thought about bringing this idea to Norman, I definitely was, it was geared towards center city. But the more I've talked of it with people in the community, especially developers, especially people in business, they really want to know if there's an application elsewhere in the city in terms of, you know, maybe in the suburbs or on the fringes, not necessarily in the core. So can you speak to that at all a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. The short answer is yes, it's broadly applicable. So we think of pattern zoning as a new municipal technology, just like the original zoning codes were a new municipal technology. And just like original zoning codes were meant to separate residences and commercial businesses from noxious and industrial uses, and they were meant to do that citywide, we can do citywide applications with this as a new technology. The way it gets implemented changes. So just in very plain terms, the buildings you would pre-approve for Main Street would be different than the buildings that you would pre-approve for the suburbs. And you would probably have some of the attending or associated components also different with each one of those buildings, but all the mechanisms would remain the same.
So, Councilmember Peacock, what I've seen in different parts of the country, the concept of accessory dwelling units or granny flats. The city of Clovis, California was very much interested in providing accessory dwelling unit opportunities in existing residential neighborhoods to provide age-in-place abilities. And they put together a portfolio of accessory dwelling units between 600 and 800 square feet, and it was a situation where all you had to do was verify the setbacks in your backyard, and you can grab that set of plans and go build it. You're permitted to go. And I thought, what an interesting application. A homeowner may not even know where to begin to develop a granny flat, either for them to age into or to bring mom and dad over tomorrow. And you could potentially accelerate the ability to age in place pretty dramatically.
No, I think that's an excellent point, and it's one of the many prongs that this approach, I think, could tackle. Just a couple of quick comments. Otherwise, things that I really like about this is that all your buildings are done at a neighborhood scale. I mean, I think you showed the three-unit building that looks like a single-family house. I think that's really important, that these buildings don't overwhelm the neighborhood. But at the same time, the variability that those, that the single plan offers, I mean, you could have one-floor plan repeated 10 times in a row, but it would look like 10 different projects.
That's right.
Because you've got different versions of that. So I think it's just, it's a really powerful vision, if you ask me. And I mean, I really want to see as far as we can take it. I know that we're limited in terms of time, and as far as this administrative delay goes, but I don't think that should limit us from taking the big swing, so.
I just want to ask one thing. So I think the quick start is awesome. I mean, if that's something that we can do, this is a huge, it's a huge, awesome opportunity. But I do want to ask one question for you. So these are pre-approved plans. What about the engineering? So we're talking about, you know, slab down. Where does that come in for us and the applicants and stuff?
Great question. Everybody who understands their job as a planner asks us that question everywhere we go, so we were ready for that one.
She passed it.
Okay, so the answer right now is they're not included. And they're not included because of the site-specific conditions are super hard to predict. And because it's not that we can't, it's technically feasible to address them, but it comes back down to budget and how much resources can be assigned. So right now, the way it works is when we say preapproval, what we mean is that your building's safety department has on file a contingent approval letter for that building, and it has a bulleted list of the things that are required to get the final approval. And so you can imagine for a larger multifamily building, that's going to include MEP and structural drawings as a statutory requirement?
It doesn't?
Well, depending on the state, right? So in Oklahoma, and depending on how we do the program, in Oklahoma, it's very lenient compared to other states, so maybe we don't have any buildings that strictly require it. But in any case, there may be a few things that are left over that aren't fully pre-approved, and we just want to make sure that we design the program to communicate those to applicants. And we also want to include straightforward buildings. So the studs, for example, and not to get in the weeds, but the studs in the walls should line up with each other, right? And we will design the building so that it doesn't require a structural engineer, for example, to do a complicated analysis, so that the foundation can be a typical foundation, even if it has to be rated, right? And so this is something that we haven't covered, but it goes to your point. We don't pre-approve things that are avant-garde, right? Or things that are experimental in terms of style or in terms of building technology. It's not that those things shouldn't exist. That's not what we're saying. What we're saying is that the standard of preapproval should be straightforward, familiar buildings. And you have a review process that works for things that are more contemporary or more experimental.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you going to finish up on that?
Yeah, just one more point on that. Along with the question about engineering, another question we often get, excuse me, is from architects, and that's about, you know, sort of what, how does the architectural profession play into this or not? Most of the buildings, if not all the buildings in the catalog, are going to march up to the threshold that would require an architect's stamp, but not go over it. So that's very much sort of the missing middle piece of this, right? These are buildings that aren't traditionally profitable for most architecture firms to engage in, so they just, you know, they wind up not designing them. And frankly, you know, draftsman builders end up designing them, and that's, you know, one of the reasons that this particular class of buildings maybe isn't always as high quality from a design perspective as we might like. So this is, in some ways, you know, an opportunity to get members of the profession, you know, in our sort of ecosystem of qualified designers into an area where they aren't currently working. That's not to say that we couldn't have a discussion about including buildings that do exceed that threshold. We did that in the city of Bryan, and the strategy there was to build in a process that allowed local architects to participate. So there's sort of a handoff that takes place. We frequently receive inquiries from architecture firms in Bryan about giving them the electronic drawing assets to complete those buildings, get the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural, all that engineering done. And we have a form for that. It's a standardized process. We pass it off to them, and local firms complete it.
So within our Center City Form-Based Code right now, some of the form districts, they have a three-foot elevation required. So is that something that you guys have worked with? I mean, the drawings that you're showing us on your presentation, you can transition those into those areas that might have to have that three foot?
Is that a three-foot finished floor elevation? Yes, we can totally accommodate those. No problem whatsoever.
I have to say, guys, this is a fantastic presentation. And I was a little skeptical when I came here, but I like the plug-and-play option of all this. I can see why you like it. And this is more of a statement than a question, that I'm really excited to see this thing come forward. I think this will help. The code is full, it's so, it's so big. It's hard for developers to do and build something and get the project going forward. I think this will solve that problem that we've been discussing, to make it easier to get development going forward. And so I think it's a terrific idea, and I'm looking forward to seeing this quick start thing happen in Norman as soon as possible. So again, you know, I'm at the city of Bryan webpage, and I'm seeing what you guys have done there and seen all the comments here. I'm just saying it's wow. It's fantastic. So I am looking forward to seeing this go forward.
Great to hear.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Okay, well, this is, we, Councilmember Peacock and I, plus some planning staff, had the opportunity to see your presentation two summers ago through the Urban Land Institute.
Yes.
Opportunity to join these things virtually, you know, and be introduced to this concept. And I'm not sure how we would have been introduced to it in this way if we hadn't had that opportunity. So this is something that we really have been kicking around for almost two years now. And so I am, I have been intrigued with this, the way that you have described it tonight. I immediately thought at the time about how it could apply to our issues that we're having, continuing to have with Center City Form-Based Code. And so I am all on board in moving ahead. And for me personally, I always thought that this could be something that we could start with a pilot project-type thing or demonstration project kind of thing to address one of the most confounding issues that we're having in Form-Based Code, which is these corner lots, because it's so difficult to interpret the current code. So the fact that you can have this working parallel with existing code, I think that's a really powerful thing. And to, we have just started our work with our Ad Hoc Committee, and we are tied to a timeline with the administrative delay. However, from my point of view, this is something that I'm not, I'm not really convinced that we have to have it completed by the end of our administrative delay. We've done this before, two years ago, to address some of the continuing issues that we're having within the Form-Based Code. And we made a lot of progress, but we also left a lot laying on the table that was not addressed at the time, which is part of the reason that we're circling back to take another look. So I'm not sure, you know, the finer points of how we get this process started and how it lines up with this timeline, I'll leave that to city staff and our legal staff, and what we can and can't do as far as within this time, the clock is ticking on the six months. But I really think there's a way forward with this to still start this focus and invite the community in to see how we're going to apply it in this very specific way. And whether it's ready to go by the end of the administrative rate of delay, I'm not convinced. That's really important, because you've got to start somewhere. And I'm sure there are ways that we can figure out how that process And I'm sure there are ways that we can figure out how that process moves forward with this very specific problem, while still continuing the other work we're doing with that. So I understand that time pressure, but I'm leaving it to the experts to figure out, can we do a quick-start thing? Do we really necessarily have to tie it to June? Or can this be a work in progress as we continue to address other things? So personally, I would love to start there with a pilot-type of project. I think there are lots of other areas and neighborhoods within core Norman, for sure, that, you know, we could target. It's like maybe the next step of expanding it out after we've demonstrated to our community and to our development community, this really can work, and this really can make your life easier, and it can really align more with what the vision is from our community and our neighbors. As you spoke to addressing forms that are comfortable and familiar, and add to that place-making, walkable neighborhood type of thing, instead of the co-operation of, you know, craziness that we have right now. So for me, it feels like maybe incrementally is the way to go, that we start and then build and build and build, and as we go, continue to identify other parts of Norman where this might work. And I was happy to hear your answer about a form for Center City may look completely different than what you would be doing in other parts of Norman. So I think that's good. The other thing I heard that I was curious about, too, is how do you control the form and having too much of it? And having a whole, you know, a lot of infill, and it all looks exactly the same, but it sounds like you have a pathway for that, too.
Yeah, we do. So there's a couple of things. First, we can include rules, and this is something we did in Bryan, where we said if somebody was developing multiple parcels that were all adjacent, you know, they had half of a block or something, we included a rule that they couldn't just build the same building.
Yeah.
Over and over again. Now, they could build the same building if they chose one of the other variants, right? And we also, so that was the first thing. The second thing was, we set up, we set up a regime, which you probably are already familiar with, in terms of staff-approved variances, minor modifications, and things that would kick people out of the expedited review if they tried to change. People could still make changes. They couldn't do things like add a new bedroom wing, right? But there were some other changes that were still permissible, right? That staff, we empowered staff to approve. But the other thing that we think about is, you know, most subdivisions get built, and every house looks the same. And they didn't do it under a pre-approval system. They did it under the way we usually do things. And the other thing, and like, we don't like that kind of sameness, right? But on the other hand, almost every Main Street in America looks the same, and it's really charming. And, you know, nobody goes overseas to Paris and comes back and says, I'm never going back. I hated it, all the buildings in old Paris were the same. You know, they say it's so charming, it's so lovely. And so, and I've never been to Paris, but that's what people tell me. And so, what we've realized is that it's not sameness that is really important, but it's a theme, and having a theme with variations around it. And if that's our approach, it can work out really well, where things look like variations of whatever the theme is, whether they're built by different people or all by the same person. And that's really the essence of making sure that a place becomes a place, and not just a neighborhood where people live or where people have business. And so that's one of the things that's really important to us, and that's why we talk about the familiarity in neighborhoods and maintaining it and those sorts of things. We keep coming back to that.
And you can see that in neighborhoods in core Norman, where you do have very similar, you have the bungalow style, say.
Right.
That bungalow form, but it doesn't, each one is just a little bit different.
Yeah, that's right. Well, this is how cities used to be built, right? Before zoning and development codes or the International Residential Code, people would look at the houses or the buildings that they liked in the next town over and the town they already lived in, or they would look at a catalog, and they would choose one, and then they would change it according to their own ambitions and tastes, right? And you know what? Cities ended up pretty nice through that process. And so, in so many ways, that's what we're trying to enable again, is to make it as easy to build as for somebody to say, you know what? I really like that example, and I want to change it just a little bit and make it mine.
So one of the, did you want to go ahead and comment?
Yeah, I was just going to add a note about variation, variability. You know, Matthew mentioned that we're sort of changing our approach away from the kind of boutique architectural project that we did in Bryan and Claremore to a more catalog-based approach. And one of the things that I'm really excited about is the opportunity to work with other architects. So you've got, you know, just more hands at the design table. And so, Councilmember Peacock, if you had asked me that question about extending this program out to greenfield sites, you know, three or four years ago, when we were looking at pattern zone programs that only incorporated, you know, four or five building types, I might have had more concern about that at the time. But, you know, now that we're looking at a program that's able to absorb all those different hands from all those different designers, you know, I'm suspicious that we won't even need the, you know, the provisions that Matthew was talking about with, you know, having to change them every third lot or something, just because there's so many more variations that are going to be available through this kind of program.
And you also showed the example of, I think it's the walk-up, where it can be all residential, it could be a corner store.
That's right.
We've also been throwing around the concept of having that kind of neighborhood commercial, commercial corner, you know, amenity to the neighborhood, kind of, again, more back to the traditional grid neighborhood where you had the corner market or the bakery or the coffee shop or something like that. So I can see where that particular form could also be applied to lots of other places outside of Center City, but also within Center City. And then, some of the other things that we've been discussing really for several years is the whole, this whole concept of the ADU.
Right.
And I had the pleasure of being able to have the, like, drive, driving tour on steroids in 45 minutes or less with you all today. And, you know, this is, this is, I think, a conversation whose time has come again. But I also really have to caution, I think we really need to call it the ADU, because in core Norman in particular, it's not going to be a granny flat, it's going to be another opportunity for student housing. And I think being able to possibly use the pattern zone type of approach to have preset designs that actually fit the neighborhoods and, you know, look like the natural evolution of garage apartments that we have right now, that, you know, you all got to see today. I think it's a completely different kind of conversation about allowing those in more places than are currently allowed, because it would be thoughtful in scale. It wouldn't, it would be, you know, a garage apartment in traditional neighborhoods where it's actually the apartment over the garage, and not, you know, cramming as much extra building on a lot. So I think that could also be another really targeted place that we could talk about using this, too. So I really see us going in a lot of different directions, so it's kind of, you know, what the rest of the council wants to move forward on. But I love starting with a really targeted approach and then continue to build.
Yeah, I can't emphasize enough how important the process of vetting specific building types is, and matching those building types to a neighborhood, you know? Not just getting the gable-end details right, but getting it right in terms of who has access to the stairwell, who has access to the front door, how many people use that, where do they park, where do they put their trash can, all that stuff. It's sort of foundational to this kind of project.
And kind of just a last comment with the ADU, I think conversations that were held several years ago were pre-pandemic, and we're also realizing that the use of an accessory dwelling unit can meet lots of needs that we didn't even anticipate a couple of years ago. For example, you're working from home, and you really need that separation from your family living unit, and you have the opportunity to have a home office, or, you know, all kinds of ways to be able to incorporate that now into a neighborhood in ways that we haven't really thought about before either, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. Appreciate both of you coming to Norman and talking with us about this. During my time on council, I've actually become friends with quite a few elected, municipal elected officials across the country. And Matthew Petty and I just looked it up, we've been friends on Facebook since 2014, so. And it may have been a strong, I can't remember exactly where I heard about you, but it may have been something to do with Strong Towns or City Lab, something to do with city planning, I'm sure. And definitely considering that Norman and Fayetteville are very similar-sized cities, college towns, those types of factors, similar types of historic architecture and things like that. So this is exactly the type of thing that got me interested in city council when I was a kid, watching the meetings on TV. It was presentations like this and seeing buildings and blueprints that really piqued my interest in wondering what goes on at city hall, what are they doing down there? And it was this exact type of stuff that got me to come, so. And I definitely see pattern zoning as being a helpful tool for the Center City area, for sure. I don't think it has to be something to address the concerns. I don't think it has to be something that we tie to the, you know, we've got to get it done by the administrative delay, but I do think it could be something that is helpful for the Center City, and definitely other areas like downtown and Lindsay Street and Porter area and North Flood. And really, as has been mentioned, it could be applicable many places around the city going forward as other areas get older, as property owners decide they want to build new houses or things like that. And having something that's an option for people that are just your regular, everyday person that owns a piece of property, they inherited a piece of property, whatever it may be, and they're not a developer, they're not a builder, they don't know anything about it, but they know they want to do something there. And having a path where they don't have to, as much as we like seeing Sean Rieger come to the podium every week, they don't have to go out and hire the best zoning and development attorney in the city just to do a, one single little project, you know, or having to spend thousands of dollars and go through months and months of a process. And then maybe they get to city council and we say no to it, you know? So having a process in place where your average, regular person has the opportunity to redevelop their property, and that we, at the same time, we're giving them a wide variety of options they can look at that the neighbors are most likely not going to be offended by, and things like that. So I've been very excited to explore this option further for Norman and how it might apply to our different areas. So I'm really glad we were able to have this discussion in front of the whole council, and hopefully Councilmember Studley will get to check it out on replay. But I do think it's something we need to pursue in Norman. And again, just thank you guys so much for coming down this evening.
Thank you.
All right. That is all the questions and comments that I see. So are you looking for directions, city manager pile?
If there is consensus, what we would do is establish an agreement for that service in a focused, broad project scenario, and get that agendized for your consideration ASAP.
And could we ask, in terms of point of contact, would that be you?
You'll get to know Jane and our city attorney, Catherine Walker, very intimately in the next couple of weeks.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Do we get to keep the toys, or are these yours?
We'll bring them back.
Thank you.
There you go. Safe travels.
Thank you.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.